Please stand for prayer and pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, we thank you for having us gather here today as we make decisions for our village. We ask that each word spoken and each vote cast be pleasing unto you. May you watch over our sick and shut-ins and place your healing hand upon them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated, council. Call the roll, please.
Phillips, Kenneth Wright, Cryin', Kenneth Flowers.
Here.
Avery.
Here. Okay, council, I need a motion to excuse councilperson Wright as he is out due to vacation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have it first by Flowers, seconded by Phillips, to excuse Councilman Wright due to vacation. Questions or comments? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Phillips.
Aye.
Cryin'.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Okay. We want your reading and disposition of the minutes of the previous meeting, and that would be October 22nd and a workshop on October 29th. Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to dispense the reading of the minutes from October 22nd and the workshop from October 29th.
Motion by Flowers, seconded by Avery, to dispense with the reading of the minutes from the date stated. Questions or comments on the minutes? Anybody have any questions or comments relating to what we had at the last meeting? No corrections or additions? Okay. Yes, call the roll, please.
Phillips.
Aye.
Cryin'.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay. Citizens' comments? We have two citizens' comments, one now and one at the end of the meeting. We do have one from an individual who lives outside the village, Mr. Bart Stutcher. I recognize you at this time. If you would like to speak, please do so.
Yeah, I just thought we'd check out the status of me having the ability to bring a semi truck in my driveway just to use that small portion of the alley. The last time I was here, there was going to be a safety council review on that, and we wanted to find the status.
That has not met yet at this point. I've had scheduled it, and we've had conflicts with attendants as to having a quorum for those meetings. And currently, right now, Mr. Wright, who chairs the committee that that fell into, is out of town. But he is aware, and we are aware, that we need to get that taken care of, especially now due to the fact that, you know, we changed daylight savings time here. So they are aware of it, sir. It was addressed by me at the last council meeting as to where we were with that, and it's up to them.
Is there any expected time I can get an answer?
I would have to talk to Mr. Wright as he is chair of the committee, and I will not override a committee's commitment on a meeting.
When does Dave get back?
Dave will get back after tonight, but I'm not sure if he's going back out. I'm not sure as far as that goes. He was supposedly coming home tonight, and then, but I know he's going to be gone for the next council meeting. So, and again, I applied safety into that, but I know he wanted...
Dave was taking lead on this, yeah.
Yeah, that's not a problem here. I would have to reach out to him, Bart, and then get a true answer as to whether we can get... I think everybody in council here wants to be there to see this, see if this is going to work. But it is in the committee right now. So he's out of town, and he will have to be the one to contact his committee members for them to get together and be there, you know, and contact you in a workable time to move this one.
What's our objective here? What's the council's objective with all this?
With what you want to do?
Yes.
To see if it will work.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, to see if actually, if the trailer and tractor is able to go onto 18th Street from the alley. Now, from what I understand, the alley was prohibited.
No, 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 no. I go the driveway from Virginia Avenue to the alley. So I'm not interested in entering off of 18th Street, or is it 19th? But anyway, I'm interested in bringing a semi-trailer through my driveway off of Virginia Avenue, pull up into the middle alley, back up to my building dock, and I'll just pull straight out. Oh, you're talking about pulling out on 18th. Yeah, we've been doing that for, since I've owned the building.
Right, and that's, from my understanding, I thought that was the way you wanted to direct your traffic.
Well, I'm going to come in off of Virginia, and then they'll go out that 18th probably. I mean, they can go out Virginia if we...
Through the alley or off of Virginia Avenue?
I'm, if you guys look at...
Because Virginia Avenue would access you back out to, out of the driveway you built.
I can do either way. I just need permission to use that center of that alley.
Well, that is the problem, is that he can't do it. He wants to pull into the alley and then back in.
Back into his dock area?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm clearly aware of that.
So, I guess he was going to show how he could do it without doing that.
Okay. My understanding was, and I think Mr. Sanner built something for us to show, you going out of the alley on the east side of where you're, you know, what you built, and then on to 18th Street. Not directly out of your dock, back up the drive that you built, and on to Virginia. The way I...
I would be willing to accept it. If you let me come in off of Virginia, I'll go out of Virginia. I'll be glad to do it that way if that's what you guys want me to work with.
Okay.
This is causing a lot of hardship right now.
I understand, and a lot of it is probably due to the fact that we couldn't get together and set a date, but I had put that in committee, and that was service maintenance, and... Hold on a minute, please. So that's where we're at right now, and I will reach out to Mr. Wright tomorrow and get an answer from him as to what he can get, you know, get a meeting together, and we will definitely get a hold of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Mr. Kinnell.
I thought we voted not to let him use the alley.
You did.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so.
It's posted on the alley.
Huh?
Yeah, it's posted on the alley.
Yeah, we voted not to let him use it.
Okay.
Correct? And now it's back to committee to let him use it?
No.
No?
It was to be accessed off of the alley on the east side of his drive going to 18th Street. Am I correct on that, the specs that you drew out?
That's what my understanding was at the first. I've never heard about him going back on to Virginia. That's correct, Bill. We never discussed going back out Virginia, so that's accurate.
We are accurate in what we're looking at.
Exactly, that's correct. We talked about going out 18th, but honestly, I thought that would be the easiest, least offensive way, but I'll be glad to go out. I can go out, I can make that driveway work to go out Virginia, too.
Nobody can stop us from doing that.
Yes, there's an alley, like, I gotta use your alley in the middle.
Oh, well, I mean, if you have to use the alley, then that's illegal.
We voted for him not to use the alley, correct?
That's why the signs were up there, no truck traffic.
Because of the damage that was being done. So I think that's to also see if there's going to be damage if it is used.
If it will fit.
That's the point of, I need to see it.
So went back to committee, or?
It is going back to the committee, yes.
You stated last meeting, Mayor Harp reminded that Mr. Stutcher was still waiting for a meeting to demonstrate the semi in the alley behind the business, left on Virginia Avenue.
That is correct.
Huh?
I reminded them...
That was the last meeting we were at.
Right, and now we're at a point where the committee chairperson from service maintenance is out of town. He's not here. So I want to work through him to get that done.
Well, in all fairness to him, too, I wasn't at the last meeting, but the meeting before that, Mr. Kinnell reported that you were locking the doors and you were leaving town, you weren't going to do business.
That's a Maryland property. You guys already lost six jobs out of this.
It's gone.
Right, but...
That was presented to us. It was presented to us that you were taking all of your business out of Seaborn and that there wouldn't be any need to do that demonstration, so...
I did already take out one business. I did take out one.
Right, right. And again, Mr. Stutcher, please hold. Okay. It came from our solicitor as we were going to just think, well, why are we doing this? But she brought a point up, you know, in reference to your Virginia Avenue business, if you're going to retain business there, then we don't want to drop the fact that we don't want to see your semi move through the alley. So we elected to go ahead and say, okay, well, am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, I was representing, but I said that building on down there by Bill Miller was being locked up, and they didn't need that demonstration. And that was when I asked that somebody reach out to him and make sure that was what he was, his intention was.
Well, right, before any complaint came upon, the owner, they said we would not let him test. So that was, that was your words, and we had decided that we will let him test. Go ahead, Kinnell.
Mr. Stutcher, if I may, I've been down the alley 100 times, and by all means, I've seen how much of your semi truck needs to pull in that alley to back into your dock, and it's very, very minimal, almost hardly at all. Bill, and I think you've probably seen it, too. I'm not quite on the spot. It's very minimal that you need even pulling into the alley.
Thank you.
Personally, I don't think there's an issue with it, and if council would indulge me, there's no issue with him pulling into part of the alley. It's maybe two tires worth. And a box truck, if he was to bring a box truck through there, which is allowed, is a lot more damage than the garbage truck than his two tires of that semi. And all he's doing is pulling in to back into his loading dock. And then he's pulling out Virginia. He's not going through the alley.
Well, I was concerned about turning off.
Yeah, he's not going out 18th. He's going to pull back into, out of Virginia. He's coming in Virginia, going out into the alley, and then backing in, and then going back out Virginia. And not going out into the, the whole truck is not going to go back out into the alley.
That was my concern.
There's no damage to the yards out on to 18th Street. It's just out the little bit into the alley and then backing in, because basically the truck, once it comes through the drive, is almost parallel straight to the loading dock as it is.
Right, because it's on the alleyway.
So...
But we're talking semis?
So we would...
So basically, Mr. Stutcher was saying that the tractor-trailer is the portion that will be on the alley, not the trailer, but the tractor. Am I correct in saying that? Or are you going to put the whole trailer on the alley when you pull in?
I can't control how that truck's going to pull in, get into the alley, and back up to my dock. I mean, I don't drive a truck.
But it's not much.
It's not much.
Okay.
How many times a year, sir?
Yeah.
How many times a month?
Hold on, Jim.
Okay.
Hold on. We're going to...
Mr. Avery?
So it sounds like changing the sign to no through trucks.
Yeah.
More applicable.
Yeah, no through semis.
Exactly, what was done right there.
Okay, then, any other questions? Yeah. Jim?
How many times a week do you think you'd be running a semi in there?
Currently, right now, once, maybe twice a month, but there's opportunity...
Twice a month?
Yeah, it's minimal, but there's opportunity of more business coming, and that's why I'm here, trying to get this resolved and see if I can get bid on the work.
And so we have to...
Mr. Kinnell, you have another question?
Yeah, we have to wait on a meeting to do this?
Well, hold on a minute. Okay. Mrs. Solicitor, do you have any questions on this?
No, as long as it says no trucks, then it's, we have to enforce no trucks. If you put no through trucks, then somebody could, oddly enough, make a motion to...
That's what I'm working towards.
...change the sign.
Right now?
But it's after you take a vote.
That's what I'm working towards. I just wanted to ask you legally. Okay, then I would ask for a motion.
I'm going to amend the sign that is currently there to read no through trucks. Any questions or comments on that?
I'll second Jim's motion.
Okay, the motion to amend the signage on the alley to read no through trucks versus what it says now, no trucks, and the motion is by Kinnell, seconded by Flowers. Questions or comments?
It is normal.
Let's make sure we get the wording right.
It said no through semi trucks.
Because if you say no trucks, it's...
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll go with trucks.
Semi, semi trucks.
No through semi trucks. Otherwise, you're prohibiting the box trucks, or I don't know what other...
Exactly, yeah. Because box trucks couldn't come down there after trucking.
Yeah, I got it. So that's, that's the motion.
And you'd always have the opportunity to revisit it later, just like you are right now.
Absolutely.
If it didn't work out.
Right. Okay. Okay, and we have a motion on the floor, seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Phillips.
Aye.
Cryin'.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Kinnell.
Mr. Stutcher, the sign will be changed to read as such.
Thank you.
Okay? And you will access in off of Virginia and out on Virginia. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, he's okay to go now, right?
As soon as the signs have changed.
Soon as the signs change. How about if I go take him down tonight?
I don't think you want to do that. Billy, how long, what did you say?
I have no through truck signs. I do not have no semi through truck signs. I can put the other ones up, it's on line, it's in my...
If that's council's call, I mean...
Really, we can take out the garbage.
Yeah.
I can't imagine that he wouldn't be able to do what he's doing. It's past this ordinance, so I...
I will let my officers know.
You can just take the signs down, and then when the new ordered signs come in, put those up. Just take them down. So the removal of the current signs will be out until the new ones come in?
No problems.
With the understanding that...
Yes.
They'll go through my yard.
Don't take the semis down the alley.
True. Any other person on public speaking? No one? Okay. We're referring and reading of communications and petitions. Melina, do you have anything?
No.
No?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Okay. I have nothing. We'll move right into manager's report. You're going to do the committee's? I jumped it, again. Yes, finance committee. Dave is not here this evening, and Marvin, I don't know if he gave you anything or not.
He didn't. We just met and discussed...
I know, I have the...
I know, I have the... I made a reply just before. Yeah, they, they... Well, we would discuss the wages at the meeting and increasing, and ask the city management for some comparisons as we go up on increases, percentage one, two, and three. Clothing allowance language for the service department, water department, and waste water department. An annual amount of $600 will be added to the new ordinance. We will also be adjusting the uniform allowance for the PD to the following. Dispatcher, $4.50 a year. Officers, $1,200 a year. Part-time dispatch, $300 a year after two years. Part-time officers, $400 a year after two years. They'll also allow the chief to purchase two uniforms for new employees, and if they quit before the two years, they will be charged a prorated figure to cover the cost. Chief Harris will provide. A write-up palace will be presented. All call-outs will now be a two-hour minimum. Shift differentials will be adjusted to the following. Afternoon will be 20 cents per hour. Midnight will be 30 cents per hour. Next meeting is scheduled November 19th at 5:30.
Okay, thank you. These are what was discussed. This is not there in the form at this point. Okay. I will also need a motion to pay bills in the amount of $410,767.47. I hear a motion on the floor to pay bills. Okay?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Avery, seconded by Flowers. Discussion on the bills. Do you have anything? If you want me to do it, I can do it.
Okay.
All right. That's fine. Highlights on the bills to be paid for this pay period are as follows, and they are Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield, $25,992.42. U.S. First Bank, $38,061.03. Borcadia Commercial Mortgage, $213,850. Murphy Tractor, $41,590.07. And there was one more here in Ohio Edison, $14,693.71. And the last one that I had highlighted here.
OPER.
Yes. Ohio Public Employees Retirement, $11,903.56. That highlighted the bills that were outstanding for this pay period, and we have a motion on the floor to pay the bills. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Phillips.
Aye.
Cryin'.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Okay, bills will be paid. Okay. Wait, 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 I just lost it. Okay. We'll go to legislative.
No meeting, ma'am.
No meeting? Capital improvements?
No meeting.
Okay. And safety?
No meeting, ma'am.
Okay. Building and land?
No meeting.
No meeting? Okay. And parking recreation?
Parks did meet. They didn't give me minutes, but they did give me a little highlight of what we talked The hallway floor is getting done. They painted some of the rooms. Mowing's pretty much out of the question because it's been too wet, so it's kind of been stopped for the year. They are going to have a workshop, not sure when, to discuss the five-year plan, and there will be an ordinance on the books on the agenda tonight to enter into a contract for the fireworks. The new price is $11,000. We will be getting the same show as used to cost $10,000, it's now $11,000.
Yes.
And that's about it.
Okay. I will say that I was up there, and they did quite a good job on that hallway floor. What they did, it looks nice.
Looks nice, really.
That metal flake and what he did, and he was putting two or three coats of sealant on it, and it does, it looks nice. So they did a lot of work up there. Okay. Planning and zoning, Marvin?
Planning and zoning did meet November 1st at 7:00 p.m. Mike Cryin', Rick Posty, and Louis Woods were in attendance. Harold Kelly and Ken Zepperneck were not. They were absent and excused. I did not make it, I was out of town. The business was to petition for replat of lots, 1062 and 1063 located at 324 South 15th Street. They did pass that, so it could be a house going up there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Civil service, Samantha?
We haven't met since last meeting, ma'am, but we do have a civil service exam this Saturday for dispatchers at 9 o'clock at the high school. We have five people that are signed up to take that, and then there will be a meeting at 11:30 following the test for discussion on rules for the sergeant.
Okay, thank you. They did pass over service maintenance, and Dave's not here, but Kenny and Jim, no meeting, let you go.
No meeting.
Veterans Memorial, Dave's not here. I have no news on the Veterans Memorial. So that pretty much covers our committees and council representatives, and now we'll move into manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Per the request of the finance committee, which Councilman Aberick mentioned, I forwarded the personnel wage projections for 2019. That included the associated costs for the operator to wage rate adjustments. Committee was considering from 1613 an hour to 1751, plus the annual percentages which council received for breakdowns from 1, 2, and 3 percent. As I understand it, it will be reviewed again at next finance committee, so if council or any of the finance committee members need additional information, please just let me know. The new John Deere backhoe that we ordered for service department did arrive this week. Glad you got your new Tomka toy, and definitely going to put it to work, so that's a very badly needed piece of heavy equipment. Chief Harris advised that our new police cruiser has arrived, I think it's at the dealership?
Yes.
And it will be making arrangements to add our decals and outfit the unit for duty, and it should be ready for service by December?
December, yeah.
Okay. East Gate District 6 Committee will meet next week, this to finalize the project, which is the West Virginia paving project for the final round, which is November 13th, that's tomorrow. We did receive 66 points during the standard rating progress, or excuse me, process. That does put us in range for a funded project. Last year, we received 66 points for California Avenue, and that was funded, but it was funded as a bubble project through small governments, so I'm anticipating the same thing for West Virginia. There is a small government meeting at the East Gate shortly after the regular meeting, and so I want to see where we're at with that particular project. The pre-app is ready to go, so if they say it's a small government, we'll get that in, and I think we'll be, I feel very comfortable that we'll get funded for that project. Council members, this is really for the benefit of the public and the press. Council members received an email from Fire Chief Anderson and Service Director Sanner about the ISO rating review. They were given very optimistic preliminary outlook. Looks like we may go from an ISO rating of five to an ISO rating of four, which is very good. Details are in the report, and the chief indicated that he wanted to give commendations and appreciation to Captain Goodrich, firefighter Dickens for their hard work in the prop, as well as Captain Harland and his second platoon, and Captain Goodrich for doing extensive and very hard work, making sure that all the trucks and equipment are constantly up to par as they should be. So I appreciate all the efforts of the fire department on that initiative, and certainly Director Sanner as well. The flags were lowered on two separate occasions to half-mask. One was in respect for the victims of the terrible act of violence perpetrated at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh. That was October 27th. And then again, lowered honoring the victims in the tragedy of Thousand Oaks, California, and those remained at half-mask until sunset on November 10th. We did have one final follow-up meeting with Larry Baxter from RCAP and WSOS. That was our asset management plan. In attendance was Director Sanner, Superintendent Reed, Mayor Harper, and myself. We did go over the plan itself, so we are ready to go in case EPA or anybody needs to take a look at that. There's the main copy at the plant, and there's another copy here. Do you have a copy? And Bill has a copy. The main initiative for that meeting is, we had another meeting with Joyce, where Where am I supposed to place her? Joyce Kessler, that's from RCAP, to discuss funding options to get the ball rolling on the water tank rehab project monies. Just briefly, council's been apprised of the situation on several occasions. We're looking at approximately $850,000 for the tank project, and about $350,000 for the water plant generator project. So it looks like we're looking at $1.2 million to complete both of those projects in 2019. Those would meet EPA requirements. I'm hopeful that we can get either a zero-interest loan or some sort of combination of grant and loans, so we cut our costs down. Best-case scenario, I think what's likely to happen is a 0% interest, that's for a period of 20 years, we'll be looking at additional $60,000 a year in payments. And as soon as I get a viable funding package from the state, I'll definitely brief council on that in the Finance Committee meeting, and let you know where we need to go from there in order to get these projects into motion. The Finance Committee requested a new clothing wage allowance ordinance. The language was provided to council in depth. The committee did approve that. Rest of that is in the report. Basically to increase the clothing allowance to $600 for service personnel, including boots. Finance Assistant Sally Getnuts and I met with Jamie Sherrill of Spectrum Enterprise to work out program changes on updated phone system and internet access. We are getting increasingly high fees for both, so we're hopeful that we might be able to save 20% across the board on what it's costing us now, so it would be significant savings. As soon as we get the details worked out, I will also present that to Finance Committee at later date for their review and approval to enter into that contract. Lastly, per state regulations, and this is something that I learned at the state auditing meeting in Athens, all political subdivisions, obviously including us, can no longer use, well, we have to have a credit card policy in place by February 2019, we're working on that. It is prohibited for cities, or villages, or townships, or any political subdivision to use debit cards. We did have one, and we discontinued that per regulations. And we are currently looking at activating a new commercial credit card for the village via Huntington Bank. So we're in the process of drafting that policy, and there should be some sort of contract from Huntington forthcoming to make sure that we have credit cards for traveling or those type of small purchases that we make via that process, so. Chief Harris recommended the following promotions have been made in the Police Department. Patrolman Chad Redfern was latterly promoted to detective October 24th. Patrolman Josh Kellum was latterly promoted to juvenile detective the same day, October 24th. And Patrolman Second Grade Zachary Scott was promoted to Patrolman First Grade effective October 14th, having successfully completed his one-year probation, so congratulations to the gentleman. On behalf of the Chief Anderson, I did complete all the financials and the FEMA worksheets. This was to the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, the AFG. It's a very tight timeline to get that done. It is a $250,000 grant for the SCBA fire equipment that council was briefed on earlier, so that package is ready to go. I think the chief has already completed the NFIRS page, and consultants are going to take care of the rest of the process from there. So it's a complicated grant, but I feel confident that we should get that quarter of a million. I was on vacation during the bid openings for the trash aggregation project, but I did complete my review of the bids in conjunction with specifications. I'd like to thank Mayor Harper for conducting the bid opening in my absence. My recommendation to the Finance Committee is to move forward with the bid for public waste. However, I do think we need to meet prior to that to discuss a few issues, including the in-house versus company billing issue. And then, of course, my other recommendation would be a three-leading process in order to have a good public education period prior to any final contract approval by council. So we're ready to move forward with that anytime at council's discretion.
Yes. I would refer that back to Finance for him to look at. I will also relay to him the intent here, and see if we can get a meeting in between the time of our next council meeting and now.
Okay.
So we can look at that.
We have one, so we can add it.
On the 19th, is that?
Oh, February 3rd.
February 3rd? Okay. Next week. Okay.
Last item on my agenda is I just want to let council know that I have started to work on 2019 budget, annual budget. The revenue side of the equation is almost complete. I am working on the new five-year capital plan, and then I will start working on the new expense budget as soon as we take into consideration our debt load. And it is my hope to have that in front of council at the end of November, no later than the first week of December, so that you have at least 30 days to review and approve it part of the end of fiscal year, so. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Questions from the manager? Jim, you had your hand up first.
Do we pay people that quit us longevity pay?
Do we? I'm sorry?
Do we pay anybody that quits longevity pay?
If they have...
So many years after.
Yeah, if they have resigned, or quit, or whatever, and they have earned it, then they would receive it. If they have not gone through that accrual cycle, then they...
So we do pay people that quit us longevity pay?
If they have...
For what they're due.
If they've earned it, if it's due and it's earned.
It's their accrued vacation and accrued sick time, correct?
Well, it's $1,200 on the police side that no longer work for us. That's why I'm asking.
For...
That's 2017. This was the projection.
Yeah, technically, 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 Mr. Richards is...
What you said home was not correct?
No, technically, Mr. Richards is still...
Tom?
Technically, Mr. Richards is still employed. He does have a termination date in December, I believe. He is getting paid whatever he's due through accrual, which is whether it's vacation or whatnot, so. So, yeah, the employee is going to get what they're entitled to, no more, no less.
Okay.
So we'll get an update then?
Yes.
On what we're going to pack?
Yes.
And is that in the charter, or is it in the ordinance book?
It's in by ordinance, ordinance and policy.
That'll be in my book?
Yeah.
All right. And now, have we lost the Sergeant Everling?
Not yet.
Mr. Everling has a tentative offer of employment from another agency, but he has not given us his, well, I have not received the official resignation, letter of resignation yet, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jim.
Discussing employees in an open meeting is not, it's not open meeting discussion, correct?
Yes, you're right.
Let's refrain from doing that, I don't believe so, right?
You're right. I mean, that is a, I mean, it was just a question, but it wasn't, you know...
I don't think it accrued.
So we should discuss that in executive session under...
At least by name, yeah.
Oh, okay. I just wondered if Sergeant has left us.
Well, that was put out.
And I got asked about the fire sirens. He said he talked to several councilmen. Can you tell me who the councilman was? Two?
Three? He's not here. Also, David's not here.
And you guys decided not to repair it now?
Well, Chief Anderson, I tried to explain to you guys during the Finance meeting that Anderson has a plan to replace them, but after all of his expenditures this year, he wanted to wait until the next year.
Oh, he wants the new ones up, not repairing?
He wants to replace, like we said in council, we want to replace. Or was it...
I think it was repair.
Wait until he's repaired. Working on his timeline because of all his expenditures he had at the end of the year. So when Rick said that, I didn't get a chance to explain it to you, because everybody was talking over everybody, so.
I was going to say, we have $131,000 in the permanent improvement fund, we have $104,000 in the, and we can't spend $3,000?
Well, council's more. After the meeting, several council members asked, as well as the fire chief, if we could delay until the beginning...
Well, the fire chief don't want to repair them.
Until the beginning of the year.
They don't want.
And it seemed prudent to hold off for six weeks or seven weeks, since we're closing out this fiscal year anyway, and trying to have any major expenditures in the fourth quarter, so.
It'd be awful cold the first year to have I Edison take them down.
Well, it's cold now, but we fully intend to do it, but I'm just, I'm acquiescing to the wishes of several members of council.
I thought it was a consent of council to give them a repair.
Oh, we are going to have them repaired. They asked for some additional time.
Okay. Mr. Flowers, you have a question?
This is just my opinion. The siren has been broken since July of 2017, and has not hindered us one bit. The fire chief has decided he didn't really see it necessary that we have this siren. We have employees leaving us left, right, and center because we cannot afford to pay them, and we find it necessary to take money out of our funds to fix a siren that is an antiquated piece of equipment that is not needed any longer. Now, it's my opinion, and I know council in a meeting, has decided that they wanted to fix the siren. This has never been voted on in an open council meeting, and if we want to start passing legislation to tell a department head to fix a piece of equipment, we can do that. And we can start passing ordinances and resolutions to have department heads do their job, and have a Mother May I-type council. But our job is to legislate, not to administrate. I just want to remind people that our job is to pass ordinances for the village, not to run departments. That's just my opinion. I think the fire siren is cool, I really do. I was a fireman. I think it's the neatest thing in the world, I love to hear it go off. I still, I would run to my front door as a 35-year-old, I loved it. But we need our money to pay our employees to keep them here. And I think we could use our money, it would be much better spent on something else than fixing a fire siren. That's all I have to say. Thank you for the time, ma'am.
You're welcome. Mr. Kellum?
Early warnings save lives. Early warnings save lives. If the sirens might have blown, we might have automatically made the front page of the paper, because it couldn't get people out. Maybe we wouldn't have. But it's our consent to use the sirens.
I just want to reiterate, it wasn't, you know, we're not doing it because it's cool, it is for the safety.
It is.
I understand that.
I would agree.
What?
I would agree. I respect all comments, but it was consensus of the council in the meeting that we replace it.
But it was a committee meeting.
It was a committee meeting. It was. You're correct, it was a committee meeting. But minus one person here, if we all stand in the same as we were in the committee meeting, I'd like to know.
You'd like to what?
I would like to know what the decision is of whom we have here at this table right now, what their consideration is. Now, we've had it to where it was pushed back, but still going to be done, or we do it immediately. Now, I'd like to know what council's consent is. I mean, we've said that we're... I'm just speaking right now, I'll ask for the motion.
Okay, okay.
And, I mean, it's not funny, it's just, it's just one of those things that, hey, we're getting back and forth here, and we have opinions, so...
I personally want to fix them as soon as possible.
Well, and I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion on the floor to fix the sirens as soon as possible? Do I have a second?
Yeah, how about a date?
Yeah, I mean, well, first of all, I'm looking for a second to the motion. If I don't get a second, the motion dies.
Right, but I mean, all right.
Yeah, so there is no second, Jim, so the motion to fix immediately is yet. So, Mr. Abrams had a question about setting a time. We're going to set a time?
All right. No, I mean, I just want to think about a minute.
For the motion, if it was different than what we already accepted, we don't have a set date, let's just go with what we're doing, and allow it to be done on the...
In the next calendar year.
Right.
Yeah.
I understand that. We can start getting things in motion as soon as the next fiscal year happens, the beginning of the calendar year, which, I mean, it'll be cold, but we can get it done in January.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, barring any time, if it's a new, you might have to order it, so that lag time, so.
So the motion, ask for a motion on the floor to accept the repair of the fire sirens in the next calendar year. And you want a date, Frank? Do you want a date? You want to set a date?
No.
Okay. So I'd ask for a motion to have the sirens repaired in 2019.
You can even say first quarter of 2019.
The first quarter of 2019.
If you want to do that.
Is that workable for council? Okay, someone make the motion?
I make a motion. We have the fire whistles repaired and were replaced in the first quarter of 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Phillips. Motion by Abrams, second by Phillips. Court call the roll.
Phillips? I'm crying.
I'm...
Flowers?
No.
Abrams?
Aye.
Yes. Okay. And then, they will be looked at and repaired in the first quarter of 2019. Mayor, draw the handle. Okay. Let's see. We're going to other village officials. Phil, do you have anything?
Nothing important, sir, but I would like the opportunity to thank council for the purchase of the new bathroom.
Sure. Thank you. Carl?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Ray?
About this time.
Okay, I would like to tell you that I, when I left the community dinner this evening, that 308 South 15th Street is being cleaned out. Okay? Lee?
No, sir.
Okay. Madam Solicitor, you have anything?
I think everybody's aware that we do have a new judge. A lot of things will play out within the next few months to determine if our new judge will be coming to Sebring, or, you know, they choose their courtrooms by seniority generaling. I've got a judge, Hunter Cannon, signing into the courtroom. Judge Diappolito's brace will open up the office composition, so we'll see. And I'll make sure that our judge-elect feels welcome to attend to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Before I move on, I had another question for Rick after his manager's report. Jumps ahead there.
Okay, sure.
With the trash aggregation?
Yes.
The Finance Meeting at the end, you mentioned that there were some questions about how the billing would be handled?
Yeah, I think that the short version, I think it's certainly a topic for additional discussion at the committee meeting, is whether or not we do it in-house, or let the, or amend the contract, let the company do the billing, and eliminate any associated overhead that we may incur for doing the same service. So I think you need to see the pros and cons of doing it, and perhaps the associated costs, and then if I can get some guidance from council on what you want to do from that way, then we could probably move forward.
Yeah, I was going to ask that you maybe get some preliminary numbers together on billing cost and changing, I think we were discussing changing the billing for the water as a possibility?
Yeah, we can do the billing, probably, and I know we've been talking about monthly billing, there are some logistics problems still to be worked out with that, but we can do the trash aggregation on a quarterly basis. Can we do that with our current software? I think that remains to be seen, and then obviously we'll have to make some changes to the cards that we're doing if we're doing the billing. Plus any additional workload to the ladies in the office, so those are all considerations, but I can get into a lot more detail at committee.
Yeah, if you can maybe get some information together for that next committee meeting, so we can discuss it at that point.
Yes, sir.
I hung up on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Under new business, we have ordinance 17-2018, an ordinance authorizing and directing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with American Fireworks Company in the sum of $11,000.
Under new business, we have ordinance 17-2018. An ordinance authorizing and directing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with American Fireworks Company in the sum of $11,000 for the 2019 Fourth of July fireworks display and declaring an emergency. Whereas, the village has determined to act as the contracting agent for the Park and Recreation Board's annual Fourth of July fireworks celebration, and funded through community donations. And whereas, the Park and Recreation Board have previously contracted with American Fireworks Company for specialized professional skilled display require, require, excuse me, requiring technical awareness of explosives, fireworks, and safety. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Sebring, Mahoney County, Ohio, Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized and directed to enter into an agreement with American Fireworks Company in the sum of $11,000 for the Park and Recreation Board's annual Fourth of July celebration. Section 2, that this is found and determined that all formal actions of this council relating to the passage of this ordinance or adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of any of its committees which resulted in such formal actions were made in compliance with all legal requirements, including those of Section 121-22 of the Ohio Revised Code pursuant to Section 311 of the Charter of the Village of Sebring. Section 3, that this ordinance is hereby determined to be an emergency major necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the municipality of Sebring, Ohio, and for the further reason that the same is necessary to ensure that the village will have a fireworks contractor under agreement for the Fourth of July. After hearing the ordinance read in its entirety, council, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the ordinance as read in its entirety.
Second. Motion by Flowers, seconded by Avery. Questions or comments on the ordinance? If none, court call the roll.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crying.
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Just remember, there is a date that we have to have, what's the date we meet if we want to change?
It's usually May, or, I mean, in March. I think it's in March. Before we go on.
May 15th.
May?
May 15th would be the date to rescind and move it to another. And in that, in that ordinance package, you have a layout from the company of everything that they supply for the, you know, display and everything on that, so, okay, that passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to read ordinance 18-2018 and Resolution 32-2018 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Flowers, seconded by Phillips to read by title only. Ordinance 18-2018 and Resolution 32-2018. Questions or comments? Okay, workable?
Phillips?
Aye.
Crying.
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance 18-2018. An ordinance authorizing and directing the municipal manager to enter into a contract with Agrosludge Incorporated for biosolids management, have the wastewater treatment plant, and declaring an emergency. Okay?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance as read by title only with emergency clause?
Second.
Okay, motion by Phillips, seconded by Crying, to adopt ordinance as read by title only with the emergency. Questions or comments? If none, court call the roll.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crying.
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Before we move on, I was going over this contract with fireworks company, and this contract appeared on the 18th of October 2018. The cost in this is, in the contract is $1,000. Is that a mistake, or is it example?
Actually, that was a mistake, and then I had to call her, and I just got the new contract.
Oh, okay.
And I got them to Angel on Saturday.
What date?
January 31st, $5,500 is due.
Right. I just saw it was 10 instead of 11.
Yeah, I'm like, what are you doing? And the writing date was also wrong.
Okay.
And that was off that, yeah.
Uh-huh.
So, it's good.
It's old info.
Okay. Okay. A resolution declaring a surplus miscellaneous equipment and authorizing the municipal manager to dispose of said surplus municipal property. Need a motion to pass that resolution, please?
I make a motion to accept the resolution as read.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Flowers, seconded by Avery, to pass Resolution 32-18. Questions or comments? If none, court call the roll, please.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crying.
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Okay. That concludes our ordinances and resolutions for this evening. Move on to our second, citizens' comments. If none, any other business to come before council this evening? None? Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second. Motion by Rock, seconded by Avery. Court call the roll, please.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crying.
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I'll go to Truett.
Okay.
Good record, nice stuff, and back.